For joining us, it is Friday, March twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. Here for the special meeting for the Youth Advisory Commission. So with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'm gonna go ahead and share. The agenda. Uh so Sylee, you can go ahead and get started.
Great, thank you. So I call this meeting to order on March twelfth at. Four oh two P M as Anthony mentioned. We can move on to the pledge of allegiance. Everyone can stand up, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands. Thank you. Alright, so. Moving on to number three, um roll call. I'm just going to call out everyone's names, and if you can let me know if you're here, that would be great. Sonya? Aruna?
Here.
Fangy?
Here.
Magna?
Here.
Tejas?
Here.
Andrea?
Here.
Niddy?
Here.
Rachel? Did I miss that?
There she is. Rachel, are you here this evening?
Thought I saw her name, but.
She, her name is here. Oh, there you are, Rachel. Alright.
Okay.
Alright.
Great. Um, so since everyone's here today, we will not be seating any alternates. So we can move on to number five, which is approval of the agenda. Um, so may I have a motion to approve the agenda for March twelfth?
On motion. Andrea, motion.
Thank you second.
Um, thank you. Uh, we'll just vote down the list again. Um, Sonya?
Aye.
Aruna?
Aye.
Fangy?
Aye.
Magna?
Aye.
Tejas?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Sylee, aye. Okay, motion passed. Uh, moving on to number six, which is approval of the meeting minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for? February eleventh, please.
Chair, can I interject? Please just make sure the only ones that can vote. Are the ones that were here at last month's meeting, and that is Sylee, Sonya, Tejas, and Andrea. Everyone else was absent.
Okay, thank you so much for reminding me that. Okay, so someone from that list of names.
Tejas, motion.
Okay.
Andrea, second.
Okay, thank you.
Then the vote will be.
Yeah.
Everyone and the other ones will abstain.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, so let me see if I remember the list. Uh, okay, uh, yeah, Sonya?
Aye.
Aruna? Okay, Fangy?
Aye.
Magna?
Abstain.
Tejas?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Sylee, aye. Okay. Uh, motion pass. Um, moving on to number seven, public forum. Do we have anyone for the public forum?
I don't see anyone. Do you, Anthony?
I don't see anyone either. Alright.
Um, thank you. Uh, we can move on to number eight, which is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
I don't have any announcements for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, so moving on to number nine, business items. So we're just gonna go through the list. Um, A is work plan events, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Number one is career day. Background. For the twenty twenty to twenty-one work plan, the Youth Advisory Commission. Um, to provide and host a virtual career day for, for Milpitas teens. And partnering them with local Milpitas employers. Um, this event would allow for teens to meet and understand what different career fields that presenters would provide. And how their business can potentially relate to the teens' interest. Recommendation, push this event to the Yak twenty twenty-one to twenty-two work plan. To allow for enough time to plan and allocate the logistics needed for this large event. So if anyone has, um, does anyone have any comments on this, or we could just move on to a vote to? Push the event to the following year's work plan. Okay, um, so may I have a motion to push the career day event to the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two work plan, please?
Megan, a motion.
Andrea, second.
Okay, um, we'll vote. So Sonya? Aruna?
Aye.
Fangy?
Aye.
Magna?
Aye.
Tejas?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Sylee, aye. Thank you, motion passed. Um, so moving on to the film competition. Background, the Youth Advisory Commission is looking to partner with both Milpitas High School teachers and the Arts Commission. To provide and plan a film competition to which Milpitas teens will be able to submit their films. MHS staff and Arts Commission will, um, sorry, will be asked to help judge the films and provide feedback to the students participating. The event is scheduled for May fifteenth. Recommendation, commissioners to provide flyer, concept, event details, which include submission dates, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Requirements, flyer, concept, categories, et cetera. Commission to provide all updates. So would anyone like to start?
Yeah, um, so I emailed Mr. Renter, the video production teacher. And also the yearbook teacher, and they both were, um, interested in judging for the competition. So we have two judges so far, and I believe at the last meeting, Anthony said that there might be. A third person, I forgot from, was it the library, but?
No, we had, um, we had talked about, uh, sending this information out to the Arts Commission, so with your guys' uh. Motion to move forward with that, we can go ahead and reach out to the Arts Commission to confirm, uh, for their participation for, uh, the event itself.
And I was also wondering if you guys would think it's okay if we, uh, moved the submission deadline to April twenty-fifth. So that the people have spring break in case they wanna work on the videos. Okay, um, and then I sent out all the information to, uh, the video production teacher as well, so he will. Uh, relay the information to his students, and hopefully they'll also, um, want to participate. Um, I think that that's all for the updates.
Did we have anything else from, um, I know that Rachel and I believe you also, Sylee, were in that subcommittee, so if you guys had any updates as well?
Um, I don't have any particular updates, but I think that moving the submission date is a pretty good idea. It gives them the extra week, if that works with our judges.
Yeah, they would still have three weeks to grade.
Okay.
And I will go ahead and bridge that gap, uh, between, uh, Yak and the Arts Commission, so I will reach out. To go ahead and get that communication forward. For that third person. Or group, I should say.
So Sonya, sir, I just wanted to confirm. So right now we have two confirmed judges from MHS.
Um, Ms. Walker and Mr. Ranger.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so would we, um, vote on moving the submission date to April twenty? Um, so may I have a motion to move the film competition submission date to April twentieth?
Oh, sorry, I, I said, um, April twenty-fifth.
Oh, sorry, I might have. Written it down correctly. Alright, sorry, may I have a motion to move the film competition submission date to April twenty-fifth?
Sonya, motion.
Megan, a second.
Okay, Sonya? Aruna?
Aye.
Fangy?
Aye.
Magna?
Aye.
Tejas?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Sylee, aye. Motion passed. Um, so does anyone have any other updates for the film competition?
So in, in reference to this too, if, um, we can make a suggestion, um, to set a deadline for. Uh, flyer concepts, and then also, uh, some of the event details. Um, and with the specifics, so that we can go ahead and push forward the information to get those things, uh, drafted up and printed out.
Okay, um, I have a flyer draft that I can send out to everyone.
Oh, sounds, something. Um, which were the, we had, was it four categories that we determined last time?
I think it was, uh, two categories.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. What were the two, uh, categories?
Okay, um, I'll just, uh, share my screen.
Cause I remember last time, but just to finalize, like, all the information.
If, if you can provide, uh, share as much of the details as you can. And approve it tonight, cause next meeting, you're not gonna have time. It has to be approved tonight.
Yeah, oh, um. Can I share my screen then?
Yes.
I don't think I have. Okay, um, this is pretty much all the information condensed. Um, so it'd be April twenty-fifth at eleven fifty-nine. Um, which is the Sunday of spring break, the Sunday ends. Um. And we have the rules that we discussed, so the two categories are the short film. Um. Which is about the harms of vaping and open category, and these are the four supplemental questions we decided on. Um, and as well as the date of the awards.
Did we determine on, um, how? Uh, students were gonna submit, like, through what platform?
Um, they're just gonna email all. Yeah, so we can just have it do there. So will we just have to approve this, uh, template or just the content?
Yeah, if you guys can, um, make your decision on that, this way I can utilize this information to push forward, uh, for flyer details.
So if we were to vote on all of this, could we just vote on all the information on the document?
You, you could have vote, you could vote on approving this template.
Okay. Um. Would it be okay if we could go to a vote, or does anyone have any other comments or questions regarding? The outline that Sonya's provided? Okay, um, so. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the outline consisting of the rules, categories, and supplemental questions for the film competition?
Um, Sonya, motion.
Tejas, second.
Okay. Um. Sonya? Aruna? Aruna?
Sorry, aye.
No worries. Uh, Fangy?
Aye.
Magna?
Aye.
Tejas?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Sylee, aye. Okay, motion passed.
Right.
So that covers most of the recommendation for the film competition, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to the mental health awareness event, um, so background. The Youth Advisory Commission has added the hosting of a mental health awareness event. In hopes of partnering with National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI. Recommendation, commissioners are to schedule, plan, and promote. The event to be hosted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, virtually through Zoom. Commissioners to provide details on progression of planning and final details at the spring meet, uh, uh, sorry, at the April meeting.
So I wanted, I wanted to share on this really briefly. Um, I got, I met with, um, Dawn Brown, who is the contact for NAMI. Now, that is gonna be, that has, uh, shown a lot of interest and wants to partner with the group. Um, and pretty much, uh, this is what she suggested, um, is that this would be a forty-five minute. Um, they call it a huddle, um, of students to basically, what they would do, um, is that the event. Would consist of, uh, teens, and the structure would be as follows. So there would be an opening, uh, grounding breeze. Uh, so basically where they go through, uh, some breathing exercises, um, then basically they would, uh, push out to. Uh, the group, uh, what, uh, they're leaving behind in two thousand twenty, what they're looking to bring into two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the definitions of wellness and mental health. The impacts of COVID and, um, those that, that comes with that, which, uh, she reached, uh, provided some examples of sleep issues. Uh, frustration, agitation, um, ways to stay connected during this time, uh, while improving your mental health. Uh, signs of feeling a certain kind of way, which entail depression, anxiety, components of mental fitness. Uh, connecting resources, and then a closing of reflections, questions, and next steps. So. NAMI is very interested in participating, uh, with this. Uh, they, uh. Would love to connect, and I am more than happy to connect, uh, the subcommittee to, uh, Ms. Dawn Brown, so that we can go ahead and get moving forward with this.
Uh, we also created two, uh, poster drafts. Um, I believe I sent them to you this morning.
Yeah, I just got those from you, yeah. So let me, let me share them.
And the times might be a bit off because I don't know exactly how long the event will be. Um, so I will fix that.
So generally speaking, um, the teen, uh, events that we would have, potentially would be. About an hour, hour and a half, um, which is generally kind of a, a good space. Alright. Let me move screens here. Sorry. Alright, so here is the first one, uh, mental health awareness. And I, Andrea, I'll let you go ahead and talk through. These two drafts.
I think they're both pretty easy to understand. It's just like, this is the event. Um, and this is kind of a basic, what is the event about? I'll have to change that to reflect like, what's actually going to happen. And then it's just, you know, uh, it's going to happen at this time via Zoom. And then I was thinking of, because I've received emails from the city about. You know, watch, watch the play and help support it, and it's basically you click on the poster. And then it leads you to a link and you can sign up. So I was thinking, you know, if we're going to spread it through an email like that. You can just click on the poster, and then it'll take you to some kind of signup link.
Yeah, we can have, um, an hyperlink attached to it, or we can even have a QR code. Um. That, that works totally fine, but yes, we can take this draft and, uh, basically. Um, you know, push it towards the end goal. Uh, we would wanna confirm, uh, the time that we would wanna do. Uh, for this, um, on that date, so that would be something we need to just, to discuss and decide on this evening.
Um, so for the time, should we talk about that and when it should be right now?
Yes.
I was thinking sometime after school, because for obvious reasons. Um, and I was wondering when you guys would have time, because I would have time anytime, like, you know, after three. So. I, I don't know, I don't go to Milpitas High, so I don't know the exact schedule and what the workload is like. So if you guys could, uh, talk about when, uh, when students would have time for this event on a Wednesday. Because April twenty-first is a Wednesday.
Um, I saw on the flyer that you had five P M listed.
Um, that was just like a tentative thing, because I wasn't sure exactly when it would be, so I just put five P M for now, but I can always change that.
Yeah, I was thinking that five, six, around that time. That, that would probably work out, cause similarly, we, like, we also get out at, like, three, but, um. Yeah, so I thought five or six, or any, any time during the evening on that day, that might work.
So if the event starts at five, would that work?
Yeah, if that's what you guys think is best, you guys can definitely, um. Take a vote on that, of, of that approval, for sure.
Okay, um, we can vote for five? Five P M, okay, so may I have a motion to, um. Start the mental health awareness event at five P M on April twenty-first?
Andrea, motion?
Sonya, second.
Okay, Sonya?
Aye.
Runa?
Aye.
Fangy?
Aye.
Magna?
Aye.
Tejas?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Sylee, aye. Motion passed.
Uh, and also for the poster jobs, do we, do we only get to use one, and or can we use both? Like, do we have to choose between them?
I think we would want to just use one, that'd be best, just so that you don't have multiple floating around. Um, did you want me to pull them up again, so you guys can select which one you would like?
Yeah, and then I'll, like, edit the finer details and stuff after.
Yeah, we would, we would add the details for you and push that through.
And this would be sent out before the next meeting?
Yes, we, we would hope, we would hope, yeah, we'll do our best. Second. There is the first one. And. Here is the second one. Okay, so those are your options. We have. Light, lighter version and the darker version, essentially. Thoughts?
I think they're both nice. I like the theme of flowers on both of them, so I can't really decide between either one. I think they're both pretty.
I personally think the second one is, um, better.
This one?
Yeah.
Blue one, okay.
Blue one's better.
Alright, so. Let's, uh. Figure out which one.
Wait, do we vote on the, um?
You'll wanna vote on the use of the flyer, yeah.
Oh, I think. The Zoom link on the flyer.
Sorry?
Like, will it be as, like, with the flyer? Like, will there, will it be on the flyer, or will it be included also in the email with the poster?
The flyer for the Zoom link?
Uh, just how will they get to the Zoom link?
There'll be a hyperlink. Generally, there's a hyperlink when you hover over it, yeah.
Also, I'm guessing that there'll be more information where it says, click here to look.
Correct.
Cool. Okay, so, um, may I have a motion to approve this flyer for the mental health awareness event?
Andrea, motion?
Um. Second?
Aruna, second.
Okay, uh. Sonya?
Aye.
Aruna?
Aye.
Fangy?
Aye.
Magna?
Aye.
Tejas?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Sylee, aye. Motion passed. Um, so are there any other details that we wanted to cover for the mental health awareness event? Um, I'm just looking through the recommendation right now.
I think that's it. Uh, I'll just fix the poster, and then we will send it out before the next meeting. And then the next meeting will just be any other finer details we have to clean up.
So Andrea, you can actually send that poster to me, so that I can push it over, um, to marketing, so that they can, uh, push that together.
Alright, I will.
Okay.
Okay, so if no one has any other comments, then, um, we can move on to number four of the work plan.
Teen center events, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh.
There you go.
Alright, uh, teen center events. Background, each year, the Youth Advisory Commission partners with the Milpitas Teen Center. To host assistant planning and promoting events for the Milpitas teens. Um, this year, due to the pandemic, the Youth Advisory Commission has decided to provide Milpitas teens with care packages to be picked up by students. Um, recommendation, commission to move the teen center care package giveaway to the week before finals week. May twenty-fourth to twenty-eight, twenty twenty to, sorry, twenty twenty-one. To which the commission will provide teens with the finals giveaway packet. This package will contain various items and print information that will help our students during finals. Commission to provide further details slash ideas for the packet. Um, so according to the recommendation, we're looking at two things here, which is deciding or determining slash finalizing the date. Then also, looking through what specifically we want in the packet. So does anyone have any updates or ideas?
Um, I think that it's a good idea to have it the week before finals. Um, and I think last time we decided that we were gonna put the brochures and then, um. We get, the lanyards of the pop sockets as well.
Yeah, another thing too, that, um, you guys may wanna consider too, uh, were things that you guys used during finals. Um, it could be like, you guys could put some hot cocoa packets in there, or, uh, tea packets, or things like that, that. Um, you know, maybe of assistance during that time where you're trying to really cram in the information, so things along those lines as well.
We could do like a fifty fifty of like, things that people generally like to have around. Like, I remember we talked about, like, lanyards and pop sockets and stuff. And then the other half could be like, or, or maybe not that, like, harsh of a divide, maybe it could be like thirty, forty, uh, not thirty, forty, uh, thirty, seventy. But, um. Like, it, it's summer, so it's gonna be like, um, I don't know, hot cocoa, was just the best. Move, but that, that could just be me, I don't know. But like, I like the idea of like, tea packets and like, maybe like junk food or like chocolate, cause I eat that a lot before finals, so.
I personally do like the idea of hot cocoa and chocolate, because those are two things that I love.
Yeah.
Those, even in the summer, you know, I'll, I'll be at home anyway, so I don't, I don't think the weather will affect that as much.
Okay, sounds good. Um, are there any, like, non-food things that you guys tend to use during finals that? Like, extra stationary or?
I mean, yeah, there's the whole pencils, but I don't know how many, how many people use, like, different pencils that they can.
I just think people would like, um. Like fidget cubes or fidget rings or something like that, or stress balls, or, yeah, something miscellaneous like that.
So right now we have. Uh, what is it? Food, that's like comfort food, I guess. Um. Maybe stationary, I don't know. May, maybe that's not as high on the list as the other ones. Um. No, what was the last one? My fidget spinners or, or fidget cubes, sorry?
Yeah, something like fidgety or something that you use.
Alright, so let's, uh, if you guys want to name off some items, so that we can. Have a, you know, a checklist of those things, um, and then you guys can. Vote and then move forward on those if you like.
Okay, maybe we can, um, include like the stress balls. And then. Was it either hot chocolate or tea bags? Um, in addition to the things that were, who were finally maybe before.
Um, we can give like, a bag of candy or something, or like a bag of chocolate, or Oreos or something. Um, you guys can decide which one specifically, but like some type of like junk sweet food, you know?
Yeah, we can purchase those items, and then you guys can have, um, those to, you know, make the, the bands or. However, you wanna put them together, and just it can be assorted, and then those can just be given out.
Oh, I was also thinking that we could have a few like motivational, like, um, kind of like. Maybe slips of paper, maybe notes, or something like that, just to give a little bit of like a reassuring positivity boost, you know?
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, that would be great. We good to move forward with those?
So would we vote on everything that we just talked about?
So let's let's list out what you guys want item by item and then we'll vote on that list. So that we know exactly what we're referring to.
So like chocolate stress relievers, like the stress balls and then motivational like slips of paper, is that it?
Sure. Um, okay, so I have. I have chocolate, stress balls, hot cocoa slash tea. Um, positivity like notes. And then would you guys want to add one more thing? Or does that look good? Okay. Um, so may I have a motion to um? Confirm these four items as like our care packages?
Any motion?
Andrea, second?
Great, um, Sonia?
I.
Aruna?
I.
Fangy?
I.
Magna?
I.
Tages?
I.
Andrea?
I.
Sily, I. Okay, thank you. Motion passed.
Could you also vote on uh the motion for the date change?
Yeah, I was just about to get to that. Thank you for reminding me. Um, so may I have a motion to move the care package giveaway to May twenty fourth to twenty eighth?
A run motion.
Andrea, second?
Uh, Sonia?
I.
Aruna?
I.
Fangy?
I.
Magna?
I.
Tages?
I.
Andrea?
I.
Sily, I. Okay, motion passed. Um, so now, yeah, uh, are there any other comments about um care packages?
Think we're good to move forward.
Okay, moving on to number five, which is esports. Background, the Milpitas High School Esports Club submitted a proposal in partnership with the Youth Advisory Commission to host a virtual esports tournament. This tournament would be hosted online for a week long period. Um, spring break, April twelfth to sixteenth, twenty twenty one. This tournament would be compromised, um, not compromised, sorry, comprised, excuse me, of many games from the game like Minecraft. Um, from this tournament, winners would be provided prizes upon their placement. Recommendation, push this event to the Yak twenty twenty one to twenty two work plan to allow for enough time to plan and allocate the logistics needed for this large event. So um, if no one has any comments, then we can just move straight to pushing this to next year's work plan, but if anyone does. Okay, um, so may I have a motion to push the esports event to the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two work plan?
Uh, Fangy, motion?
Andrea, second?
Thank you. Um, Sonia?
Right.
Aruna?
I.
Fangy? Uh, Magna?
I.
Tages?
I.
Andrea?
I.
Sily, I. Motion passed. Um, so if no one has any comments, then we'll move on to number six, which is tobacco-free communities. Um, background. The city of Milpitas submitted a grant proposal for the County of Santa Clara Public Health Department. Um, S C C P D H Healthy Cities Project Tobacco-Free Communities Program. On February thirteenth, twenty twenty, staff received notification of the funding for the grant. Um, the overall goals are to educate youth, parents in the community to prevent youth use of flavored tobacco and vaping products in the city of Milpitas and reduce tobacco retailers in Milpitas grandfathering current retailers. Um, specific objects include informing the public of any policy changes around tobacco sales and educating youth on methods used to advertise flavored tobacco products and e-cigarette and vaping devices. Um, educate parents and trusted adults to recognize signs of youth tobacco use and effectively communicate with youth about the dangers. Um, the city of Milpitas will be entering into contract with the County of Santa Clara on the terms of the grant and will act as the grant administrator for the term of the agreement. Recommendation, take volunteers, no more than two, to form a subcommittee to research current risks, short and long-term health consequences, education, socioeconomic consequences of tobacco use and vaping, training videos, print and online campaign, and town hall meetings.
I know that that was a lot. Good job, Sily. So um, really with this item, uh, we need to confirm those subcommittees, I believe. Um, last meeting, we had confirmed that that was um Tages and Rachel uh for this group. Uh, if you guys can confirm for me as well. Um, but basically what we do is we will just need a couple of volunteers of for that subcommittee, which would be Tages and Rachel have confirmed um to do re- to start doing the research for this item. And then we can bring this to a future my uh meeting to discuss the further details. So basically, basically, we're looking for for research at this point to then push forward.
I think you were right on the members and it looks like Rachel wrote in chat that Friday Night Live did receive and thank you, thank her about the inquiry for partnering, but never got back to her.
Okay. Thank you, Tages. So yeah, what we'll need to look at here is basically Tages and Rachel is to just move forward with research. Um, and that we would, we would work together within that. Once you guys start gathering the research and then we can discuss the details of it later. So if, go ahead, Sily. Sorry.
Oh, yeah. So considering we've already determined our two members, um, or our two uh of the subcommittee, we would vote on.
No, we wouldn't need to vote because they're already uh formed that subcommittee. Um, but basic, there there's no real vote needed here at this point. It's just to confirm that they'll be able to um move forward with the research and provide the details of the next.
Okay, um, thank you. So that wraps up our work plan events. Um, we can move on to number ten, which is city liaison reports.
Wait, before we move on, uh, I'm pretty sure the, wait, I I wonder why we um wanted to push the esports to the twenty twenty uh, like, what does it mean by pushing it to like the twenty twenty work plan? Because as far as I know, the esports um club emailed Anthony and Sonia a proposal and we're out with a bunch of specifics and we're like ready to go with the event for this year. By pushing it to the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two work plan, that doesn't mean that we're not doing it this year, right?
That means that this work plan for for this year, it would just get moved forward to next year based on your guys' vote. So it would just go to next year's work plan. It's just because of all that you guys have condensed within your work plan and the events and the items. Um, we don't want you guys to overwhelm yourselves and be able to take on everything within this short amount of time that you guys have.
Oh, so, okay, so we're not planning to run this event this year?
Not this year, no. So basically, we would table it until next year per your vote.
Got it, okay.
Okay, um, so does anyone have any other comments regarding the work plan events before we move on to the city liaison reports? Okay, cool. Um, so I believe the first one is a report from city staff.
Yeah, so uh, real quick, I just wanted to to let you guys know. You guys are uh doing a great job. I think it's uh, you know, great that we're moving forward with the items that you guys have. We have our set dates and everything ready to go. Um, just to confirm, I will partner uh or I'm sorry, not partner, but I will um connect you guys with Dawn Brown for the Mental Health Awareness um event so that she can uh provide you with those details and we can collaborate um on pushing that event forward and getting the information out. Uh, but besides that, you guys are doing a great job. Just want to let you guys know. And besides that, I don't have anything, so you can move on to item B.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we have the report from council member.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. Um, nice to see everybody again this month and I'm always excited to see everyone. So at this time, the council has been busy with the budget because it's due sometime in in June and it's effective July first. So city staff and the council have been working hard on those budget recommendations. Um, also, uh, this week, we approved the general plan. What is the general plan? It's it's really the bible on how we develop our city. It's a multi-year uh process. It took many years before we got to the last Tuesday night's approval. Yeah, it's been like over twenty years, the last time we did our general plan. So if you look at general plan, it's it's like a, if you look at the different maps, uh, next, next time I bring the map, it tells you where the housing will be, where commercial, industrial, innovation district, uh, Main Street, bar, it all those are rolled into one map. So it's really how we foresee developments in ours, in our city for the next at least twenty years. Hmm. I also, I also, I don't know if I've shown this. I hope not. I I met with the CEO of Orleans. Orleans, they have a pilot uh pilot uh machine. It's for recycling. Have have I shown this to this group yet? I don't think so, right? Okay. So we have one. We have a mule. We have this uh machine. This is recycling machine. So there there are like eleven machines in the Concha Costa County and we have one at Safeway. If you go in Safeway and it's right at the entrance on the left side, close to the bathroom. So I was testing it the, when I went there.
Hey, this is the newest machine for recycling at Milpitas. Okay.
So you you need to load, you need to load two things, the Orleans app. I'm trying to find out how much money I have. I have like fifty five cents. I'm a slow trail. The beauty of this machine, you don't have to go to the recycling center. You just go to Safeway and you, if you're first time, you download the Orleans app and then just a little information email and it's really cool. If you're raising money for next year, just collect all those, the C R Vs, is that C R V, bottles, plastic? And you, i- it's very easy cans, so that's a good one. So I'm asking, when I met with the CEO, I asked him to put another one on the other side of town, maybe around Lucky Store. So they'll look into that. Another one we have uh, we have now uh whatever Mike is gonna put up, then I'm gonna talk about it. Oh, one of the residents emailed me and thanking the engineering department. And because they needed to put this mobile um, mobile where it speed, it's speed sign, because this street is very busy. There's a lot of kids uh playing here, so she was concerned. So we put this up for her, for this street. Cars were going forty, forty-five miles an hour, but now they go slow down once they see the sign. So that's a good one. Next one, please. Okay, this is one of my initiatives. It's called A D U Mondays. If your parents or neighbors are thinking of uh um expanding your home, like an A D U, an additional, like this one, this is an external one. The, we now have A D U Mondays where they can make an appointment online and they can meet with the different departments for half an hour and answer their questions. So this is really cool. Please uh uh communicate this to your parents and eh your relatives. It is gonna be handy. Next one, please. We are working on cleaning up our city and one of the things what is hard to do a cleanup on the debris and the trash. So if if it's a public street, our street, you need to call this number. If it's like a, the Montague area, that's gonna be Santa Clara County roads, so you need to call this number. If it's, if the trash or the debris are on in the creeks, so we need to reach out to Valley Water. If it's by six eighty, eight eighty, that's Caltrans property, so we have a number for that. And if it's the railroad tracks and we have some debris there that needs to be cleaned up, then we have the Union Pacific. So cleaning up the different debris in our city doesn't mean it's all the city properties. It depends on our partners. So it could be Caltrans, Union Pacific, Santa Clara County. Um, it could be private as well. So so it's it's not an easy task. That's what I'm trying to say. And. I think that's it, right? Thank you, Mike. And any questions? None? Okay, I have a question. When there are debris you need to pick up and the railroad tracks, who do you call? You go to web, to the website and who do you pick the call? Which number? Which agency or partners do you call? Come on, come on. That's easy, come on. Okay, how about?
Was that Union Pacific?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you, Rosanna.
You're welcome.
That's good. That's good. So so just remember the different sites, uh, we have different partners. Thank you. Thank you all and have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
You too, Councilmember Chua. Thank you.
Um, okay, thank you for your reports. Um, so we can move on to number eleven, which is the upcoming agenda items. Uh, A is subcommittee reports.
Yep, so we'll just uh next, next week, we'll just continue to go through our our work plan and continue to go through those items.
Sounds good. Um, so I guess we can now adjourn to today's meeting. Um, may I have a motion? Oh, wait. Oh, do I? Um, yeah, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
Any motion?
Andrea, second?
Sonia?
I.
Aruna?
I.
Fangy?
I.
Magna?
I.
Tages?
I.
Andrea?
I.
Sily, I. Uh, motion passed. I adjourn today's meeting at four fifty P M. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good job.
Good job, guys.
Bye.
Great day.